Presentation, Senator Norman Mayer. The first thing I'd like to say is I would like to thank all the council members and the residents for participating in this challenge so that we can do it in person. Is a lot of hours spent working on this and campaigning, so appreciate everybody's help, but I'd like to also appreciate, we appreciate very much what the red cattle does for the community.
Yes.
You know, shelter, clothing, food, all of the above. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, so why don't you come along this side? Well, good evening, Major. So I'm David Pizer. I'm with the South Beach, I'm the major gifts manager for the South Beach County. I'm here with my director for Denton County, Michael Shering.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're here to present. So the, uh, the major, so she may be coming in here in just a minute, but they've been setting up the shelter, the Louisville emergency shelter for the cold weather for the last couple of days. So that's, so, but we wanted to come to, uh, just so to thank you for your participation in the mayor's challenge.
Yeah.
So with that, and so with that, we have, uh, number one, the certificate for this year, so that you can hang in the city council or whatever with that. And even more importantly, because, um, Bartonville was first place in the Louisville area, so that would include Louisville. Yes. Well, that would be Louisville, Highland Village, Flower Mountain, and Bartonville. So she, 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 so y'all, y'all lead, lead collectively. Bartonville raised more than all the other three combined. Y'all just crushed it. Oh, y'all crushed it. So you really showed up as those big city people. You know, so with that, so we have a, we have a belt that's actually engraved with your name with that, so you can take that and then you can use it in future.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, uh, yeah, future efforts. So, uh, and because of your leadership, you were able to, uh, help out with, uh, with Mayor Gilmore, so, uh, Mayor Wilcox and Mayor Moore. So we were just in Flower Mountain last night. So, uh, but we are pleased to present this to you. So you raised five thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Yes. So, yes, so, so, yeah, so that's real. So, uh, and we're number one in Denton County, so you, so with the amount that you raised, so you even beat the city of Denton, uh, Little Elm, all those rich people. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, and Hickory Creek came in a close second, so, uh, we're really proud of that. We're really proud that these little towns are just like showing everybody that sort of the big, sort of big town. So we appreciate that. So, uh, uh, and so you did, so nine hundred and eighteen dollars was what you actually raised at the cattle, and then you did five thousand and twenty-four dollars on a virtual red cattle. So that's actually what put everybody, that's what actually put you over the top was the red cattle. So we appreciate it. So, oh, and here's our major, so she was here.
My apologies. I was stuck at a light for twenty minutes. I was the first car, and all the lights changed for everybody else except my thing.
So, yeah, well, and also setting up a shelter and things like that. So,
Yes, yes.
We're just thanking all the great work that you do in the community from food to shelter and clothing, everything y'all do.
Well, what you all do helps fund what we do, and, and our partnership is what makes all the difference in the world. And you're right, Major Wayne Durham is setting up the shelter and accepting the time people for this, terrible cold weather that we're about to have even now. So, anyway, thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate it, and y'all are the, the, the big winner.
Thank you.
I, I remember your challenge to, uh, Mayor Gilmore last year, and I thought, I wonder if anything's gonna happen.
So, you know, I actually thought about, um, when we, cause we did Louisville last week, I actually thought about inviting you.
Yeah, a little back and forth goes a long time.
In the city council meeting, so, uh, but we appreciate it. So it was, it was really fantastic.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing us. Sure. God bless you.
And the certificate, so thank you very much. So, uh, the major needs, uh, we still, the major needs to sign, so we'll take it and we'll, yeah, yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the help here, and all the damage.
Public participation. If you'd like to speak to the council, please go out of the forum and hand it to Shannon. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during a public participation. Please remember to give your name and address for the record. Shannon, you have it?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Appointed representatives, Department of Trinity, Water District, Bill. Leave that. Leave names.
They're short. We are moving along pretty good. I think there was some, uh, in your package was a show of the progression since we started eight years ago and where we're at today. I'm happy to report that we got twenty foot of water already in the basin, so we're starting to collect water now. And the pipeline, as you will see from the video, is, uh, complete. Thirty-one miles of seventy-three or eighty-three inch, uh, pipe coming through Lake Louisville from up there. At the top of the hill, we had to pump it up there, and then halfway down, uh, halfway up there, it comes down, so we didn't have to pump it the rest of the way down Louisville. So we didn't have to have a pump station and a collection pond up there. So that's how we did it. I don't know that that shows it. Are you ready, Shannon?
I am. Does it matter which one we do first?
I'm sorry?
Is it, does it matter which video we show first?
No. This is just a catch-up. Lot of dirt, I'll tell you. You know, these pictures, we have a drone that we use to check on the progress of the lake, and we take those pictures as it's happening and check on our contractor. That's all that. Damn, spillway back there. Don't do it. Short.
It's really a special day for our Trinity. Uh, we, uh, recognize the laying of the last pipe joint in the thirty-two mile transmission system for Lake Rock Hall.
What this pipe means, it means connecting Lake Rock Hall to the, to our district's infrastructure. This is, this is the pipe. This is the conveyance that's gonna put the water.
Texas is facing a water shortage, and these new resources are vital to the life of Texas and the growth of the area.
You know, we still have the tunnel, we still have the balancing reservoirs, still have a couple of components to finish out, um, but this is a huge milestone for us to be completely on.
Yeah, so today we're signing the last piece of pipe, which is just one component of delivering water to North Texas, the Loma Fana County. So we have a water pump station, the lake itself, the bouncing reservoir, and this is just a, a key cog in that, in that gear.
Seeing the signature of the oil on the pipe, uh, the people who worked on it, the people who made the pipe, is, is meaningful. It's, 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 it's them putting their, their, their signature, as well as putting their signature out and working every day.
I'm excited to see not only the, the water resources it can provide, but also how it can help the local community with recreational purposes and bring people to the, to the lake to see it and see its splendor.
This is just a fantastic example of all the teamwork and the cooperation and coordination. We're very fortunate that we've been able to accomplish this in such a record time.
Yeah, the, uh, the pipe was made in Paris, Texas. There's a company just started up there, and we contracted with them, and each pipe is different. It's amazing. If you wanna make the turn, they had to bring it out there in order, so that if you wanna make a slight turn, each pipe was constructed differently to make it fit together. And I was inside one of those tanks, or pipes, and they weld them from the inside. Once they get them up in place, a guy goes in there and welds the pipe from the inside. It was quite an operation, but they wouldn't let me weld it. I could only look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Was it, was it, I almost asked a question, Bill. I was gonna ask her a question.
Were all the pipes metal? Are they steel?
Yeah, they're welded together.
They're all steel, yeah.
Yeah, they're all welded together, and, uh, we've got the, the collection, uh, born up above there, and that's where the water comes to pump it up there, and then it pumps it back down. Pump station is there. That pump station is in the dam itself to pump it up there. Are pretty interesting. Huge. I think they cost over, I don't know, hundred thousand dollars a feet. They're huge, the pumps. And electricity, we shopped around on it a bit and, uh, found a good provider up there. And so we got our electricity for about half what we would have gotten down here. So that's a lot of electricity to run something like that, I'll tell you. Any other question? No?
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Denton County Emergency Service District One, Chief Bond.
Hey, Mayor Calhoun, thanks for having me. Uh, just came from downtown. They had a meeting, or got canceled virtually, and I said, they had a little coupon, and they actually canceled it. Uh, but anyway, I wanted to kind of, I guess, talk about a few things. Um, obviously, with the weather, uh, be careful tonight going on. It is, you're, I was on a congress call earlier, and we thought that transportation would kind of dry up before the cold hit, you know, a little bit sooner than we expected. So you'd be careful when you're on the road tonight going on, because there is some slick parts out there. Uh, you know, with that, we, we also, because of the cold, we had to cancel our ground running ceremony, the tax catering for tomorrow for the news station that's in North Lake. So, uh, we are looking to reschedule that. Probably, we're hoping, weather seems to be better next week. Just a matter of coordinating everybody's schedule, so we're trying to see if we can do that. So hoping we'll send some out soon, uh, to let you know about rescheduling the press. Um, with that, we're excited about that news station. It is, they have started turning dirt work, so they're actually doing work. We're committed with, we're Texas Motor Speedway. It's on the east side of thirty-five of Del Arnhardt. Uh, if you drive by there, we have a big sign up there now, and so they're actually working on that simultaneously. Uh, the building itself has been, uh, it's a modular building. It's being manufactured as we speak as well, so they're all being worked at the same time, and so the plan is for it to be done, delivered, and, and have it installed and be operational by the end of July, maybe August. So we're, we're moving really quickly. So a lot of good things happened there. With that, we did hire, um, if you have not seen or met, we do have a new assistant fire marshal. He works with, uh, Chief Wynn. He's, uh, uh, come to retire from Denton. He can work for us, and he's gonna help us as we're growing in that area. We're gonna take on more of the prevention fire marshal duties with that, and so he's gonna be a great asset for us, so we're happy to have you. Um, the biggest news, though, is the new ambulance. So here's a report. I think I, when I came here last, uh, last month, I told you that, you know, we're supposed to have an ambulance every February. Uh, dealership said, well, it's not gonna be here. It's gonna be May, and of course, I was very upset about that. And, uh, we're working with them. They're very, uh, graciously had offered us a longer ambulance, so they've given us a longer ambulance for free. Um, we're, we had a reserve ambulance, so we're gonna use our reserve ambulance as our new ambulance, but the, the longer ambulance is our given to us to have a backup in case one of them needs maintenance or something. So with that being said, we got that all secure, got everything all ready to go. We hired, uh, six firefighters for that on February first, uh, put them through a two-week orientation, and then this weekend, Saturday, uh, the fifteenth of this month, we, day after Valentine's Day, we put it in service. So we're excited about that. It's, uh, you know, obviously, it's anytime you can add that, an additional level of service to the citizens. I think it's important, obviously, with the area growing, that definitely helps. Uh, on, on that note, just, uh, the week before that, I think it's important to, to let you know that we, uh, we had our annual awards banquet, uh, which we do every year, and it was exciting, of course, getting together and celebrating, recognizing of the years. And, but one of the awards we give is obviously, we do a life saving, and, uh, whether it be unfortunate or fortunate, we have a lot of life savings throughout the year. And so, but we always ask our members to, you know, select one. One through the life saving event, actually, really stood out. They nominate, they vote on them. Well, the one that they got voted on and, and won, uh, was an, is an incident that happened back in December, uh, with, which was, I call it divine intervention, but back when we started talking about the new ambulance, I told staffs, anytime we happen to have extra staff, go ahead and staff that ambulance. We have the reserve. We go ahead and put it, and we've only done it like two or three times. We just never really had a staff to do it here. Well, that particular day, we had the staff. We staffed that ambulance in service, and we had an agency called, uh, Heeman at Copper Canyon, not too far from there. And it was a gentleman who had an accidental gunshot, bleeding out profusely. Uh, double up police actually responded pretty close by to them as well. And, uh, we got there, stabilized, and essentially, you know, bleeding out tremendously. Savior's life had him in surgery in about less than twenty minutes, which if we'd been waiting on another ambulance, it would have been a whole lot longer than that. And so it was, obviously, that was a huge, uh, a win, having that ambulance there. I call it divine intervention. The gentleman actually showed up. He came to our ward and said some nice words to our members, and, and he was, uh, it was kind of spontaneous. He goes, and I even voted for EST two. You know, thank you if you voted for that, because, you know, it saved your life. So, but anyway, I just wanted to kind of tell that story, because it is important. We're very excited to have that, that, you know, that ambulance there, and we look forward to the news station as well, but, uh, anyway, uh, well, now, it's going for everybody. Give it to everybody.
Say we have zero injury, like maybe?
Yes, yes, we're don't. Yeah, we're, that's, you know, that's what I was saying throughout my career, and I know Chief can talk about this too. It's like, man, this would be if they could got them all healed up and something like that. Yeah, we're, we're a good place. We're a very good time. We're a much better place than we've been. Probably the best place we've been in two years, and so I'm very, uh, I feel very blessed and honored to be a part of the organization.
You know, it's gonna be a great job.
Yes.
Great job.
A lot of teamwork, and I, and we couldn't do it without your support either. I mean, this is the part of the life, go around and do all this, is just kind of, you know, give, you know, getting feedback and, and giving back to communities, which we always talk about, all the things we do. It's, it's great to be a part of such a great, uh, part of Denton County that's, uh, unique to any other place I've seen, and so it's, it's great to see that. Everybody comes together, all little towns, small enough to kind of help each other out. It's a totally great to see that.
Thank you. Be careful going home.
Yeah.
Yeah. Number three, uh, Police Department, Chief Brooks.
Mayor Council, uh, we have a packet. Number of calls we have for service, uh, in January is one seventeen, and there's, uh, two less than we had in twenty twenty-four. We added a few different, um, tables, because last time in council meeting, it asked some, uh, the, the traffic we thought's important, and also we have, uh, our, I mean, traffic and accidents. So if you look at the, the chart, obviously, we don't have a lot of accidents, but we added one more this month than we had in January. So we had six last January, and seven this month. And then if you look at the call types, uh, we had eleven assist agencies. Sometimes that can be a little higher, a little lower. But one of the things I want to point out, if you look at burglaries, you see three. These are call types. Like, sometimes we'll get the call of a burglary, but when we get there, it's really not. Or you get there, it's a theft of an automobile, but it's a repo. So when you see these, what you really need to focus on are the part one crimes. And if you look at that, we have one burglary, and that was of a storage shed. So when you look on, uh, you know, the part one, the UCR, uh, we did have a burglary. We did also have a sexual assault case that the lieutenant was, he is working. And then, of course, you have your, uh, officer initiated activity. Uh, but one of the, the newer charts, we had comparison of traffic stops. We had a hundred and sixty this past month, or in January, and in twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and twenty-eight traffic stops. So obviously, that's up. Um, so be careful driving through Bartonville, please. Um, people stop you. Um, and then the nice report is the Axon body cameras that y'all, uh, approved for budget. Those things are incredible. They are the top of the line, the best you can get, and I appreciate y'all. The guys will really like them. So with the body cameras are deployed, we won't be deploying the, uh, in-car cameras, because they'll come out, uh, and put it in the car. Uh, Defender does not, uh, install those. Axon comes out with their staff and, and puts those in the vehicles. We should be getting the other, uh, twenty-four oh three out any time. Uh, we had the graphics. We took them, uh, the radio the other day. We got a new radio that y'all approved for Motorola, so that should be coming out any day when that comes out. Once we get the camera installed, it'll be, uh, put out to D9s. Okay. And we had two, do you have any questions, anybody? I'm going too fast. Good, okay. Uh, we do have two, we have two, two DWIs, um, and, uh, the racial profiling court is in there, uh, per the government code, the CCP, every, um, year before March first, I have to report, uh, to council our racial profiling. And in twenty twenty-four, the Bartonville Police Department conducted a fifteen hundred and five traffic stops. Of those, seventy-five percent were moving violations. The breakdown of individuals and race of ethnicity was sixty-six, sixty-six percent white, twenty-two percent Hispanic, seven percent black, three percent Asian Pacific Islander, two percent Alaskan Native American Indian. Our public education efforts remain in place with racial profiling complaint, uh, procedures available in the police lobby and on our website. The lieutenant conducted his monthly audits of all traffic stops with the officers to make sure they're in compliance. There was no indicators of any policy violations, and there are no racial profiling complaints this year on any officer. And we also do a comparison analysis of the data confirming compliance with our general orders of racial profiling, and based on the review, I'm recommending no changes to our current policies or procedures, and I'll take any questions later in the past meeting.
Thank you.
No, that's you. And administration, January two thousand five, General Election. Final period did end at five PM on Friday. We will have one contested race, which is place one. We'll have the incumbent Jim Roberts and a candidate, Randy Van Hossen, that has signed up. I have also sent out today that we will have our notice, um, placed on the ballot drawing on Monday at nine AM here in, uh, council chambers. And before I go into, um, anything else, I do want to say on the financial report, Chief and I have been working on this, and we decided to give more information into our report for you, so they're highlighted up, because every month, nobody remembers but under the other categories, and we wanted to open that up for you, so we're hoping that that's gonna be very helpful for you in future months. The financial report starts on page twenty-three of your packet, and this is month, Jan, uh, four of the fiscal year. On page twenty-four, which is the all general fund revenues, this is where I'm showing you that we're bringing up and opening up the others slash transfer category. This way you can see a lot more information. That you'll, um, seeing you'll get better numbers. Right now, as you can tell, we are pretty on target with our budget. We have, we wanted to collect at this point thirty-three percent of our budget revenues, and we have. Overall, we collected approximately forty-eight of the revenues. So we're a little over budget, so that's pretty good. And the majority, of course, is going to be property's, um, tax that's coming in months, a couple of months. We might have a little bit more stragglers in February, but we have the majority of that. If you look at it, we have, um, we have received seven hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. So I've got a little under, um, thirty-eight percent left, so there should be straggling in. The open, um, categories, others and transfers category, the top, the total for those is at the top of the line where it says others slash transfer, and then everything that's in that green is added that to give you that total. Do we have any questions on revenues before I move forward?
Only that we're, we're looking for better than sixty-six percent, right? That's our, kind of, threshold for it.
For revenues, yeah, and they use.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then the next page, page twenty-five, is our rolling, twelve-month rolling average of sales tax. And last month, for December and January, the, uh, average remained the same at seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. So we have that little slight point for our quarterly taxpayers, sales tax. Next page is the all general fund expenditures. Here we have, um, different, our four different, um, categories, administration, police, municipal court, transfers. And right here, we're coming back expense, so we want to be leaving roughly sixty-seven percent here, what we were just talking about, Councilor Crandall. So everything, we're about a little over that. Overall, we have seventy point fifty-nine percent left in the budget remaining, so we're overall, we're really looking good. Municipal court is steady, coming in and out, just like last year. And then the transfers, of course, on this page reflect the ten and town center sales tax portion that's collected. And, um, next upcoming month, February, March, we'll be working on our totals for our payout, for our annual payout to New Quail. You know, I'll be able to report on that in the upcoming months. Next page is the expenditures by department for administration. Here is another one with the other category that we opened up for you, so that you can see everything and be more transparent through here. So we are on, overall, we are on target with sixty-nine point ninety percent of the budget remaining for the, um, eight months that we have left in this budget here. Any questions before I move forward? The last page is, uh, the expenditures by department for the police. We hear, we also opened up the other category and the supplies category, just to give you a little bit more information, be more transparent. And the police is also on target with seventy-one point four, four nine percent remain in the budget for expenditures. Thank you for breaking this out. This sounds really helpful.
Yeah.
We wanted to make sure that we can be more transparent for you and make sure that we list everything that we can. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Budget wise, that's good. Consent agenda. Thank you, Shannon. Consent agenda. This agenda consists of uncontroversial housekeeping items required by laws. I may be approving the single motion. I may be removing consent agenda. And vote on consent agenda. Number one, consider approval of the January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five voting in this. Number two, consider acceptance of two thousand twenty-four racial profiling report.
I'm moving that we accept the consent agenda.
All is in favor. Motion carries towards your. Periods and regular items, just number one, discuss and consider request purchase of shed. You have the town Christian's trade, federal events, finance, staff presentation, Councilmember Crandall.
I brought this up a couple of months ago. We're, we have the, uh, public storage over in, I guess it's Flower, that little piece of Flower Mountain, but we're paying roughly fourteen hundred dollars a period to, for our storage. Uh, it's probably about the same size. I think it's, well, about twelve, right? So I started thinking about, like, if we need to get an extra storage shed out back, I mean, it would be about front expense, obviously, uh, with the price, but it would save us, uh, money over course of, uh, time. If you look at it, the fourteen grand for ten years. And I went and talked to, uh, I talked to two different companies. The third company didn't call me back or respond in any way, so I just moved forward with them. Um, back portable buildings, uh, they've essentially given me a quote of, let's just call it about sixty-three hundred dollars. Um, they've added some windows and doors, which I don't actually need on those. They just, we just need to shed with a roller. Uh, and that style of building that she's proposing would be a barn-style roof, so it would look more, it would be a traditional four twelve, but it would be more like a hamper roof. Um, and the second quote that I got was from Vigan's, uh, over at Auburn. So it would look more, it would be a traditional four twelve, but it would be more like a ham roof. Um, and the second quote that I got was from Higgins out of Auburn. Um, they're obviously way more expensive, um, that's about eight grand. And that is just delivered. That's not set. The bad portable building, it's all made version that price, they would break it out, but they would set it. Uh, and the bad site that we prepared, uh, or have prepared. So there was to be some additional cost of, there are a few little trees out there next to where the other one is up here. We put it kind of next to it. Uh, they're smaller trees, they're, they're all less than six inches in diameter.
Pack, pack, pack berry or helm something?
There, there's some owl, uh, yeah, it's, yeah, they're smaller tree, they're more spendy trees. But we probably have to scratch out fourteen by fourteen area to be able to slide that in there. So that would be some additional cost, obviously. But for roughly sixty five hundred bucks, uh, that by fourteen, you're looking at about four and a half year payback.
Talking about that fourteen hundred, also, I mean, that's increasing, maybe you'd get bigger pay.
Yeah, that's best of it. I mean, it, it, it went up from what?
Went up twice since we've presented it.
Yeah. So.
Why shouldn't you, your question?
Yeah, we were originally paying around mid eighty dollars, now it's one thousand four.
Anyway, I just started thinking, it's like, we're going to keep doing the first street and that and story. And, and we could use it for national night out thing, like the events, we could just leave all that other stuff into that one for all the events. And then the other ones could be used for our signages and things like that.
Did you, uh, did you touch base with anyone that was touching on something on site?
I did not.
Uh, did you look at that twelve by twelve, that's a hundred and forty four square foot?
Oh.
That's, uh, that's, uh, fifty, say like fifty five dollars, eight inches square foot.
Right.
Doing that out. And that's what twelve by twelve, you just give it some perimeter as to what it looks like is fifty, those two four foot panels and another, would, would you just say, could it bring that out to the corner? Yeah, that's your twelve by twelve.
Right.
You don't expect, say, what if you said, that off? If you're going to do that, I think all we need to do is look at getting something touching the hill because the fifty five dollars for the footage, you put that up with the sixteen inch studs, which is down, down to two by fours. And then you can put masonite, so it comes on it.
Or, or, or.
Does that last you forever?
Mm-hmm.
And then when you take the one time job, you ever be maintenance free? And you do the building, they only have that down there?
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It.
And this will be essentially the same thing. It's not built on site.
Right.
It's just built off site and delivered. And I, I can, I can look at that often certain, and I'm happy to go do that.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Okay.
I did think that, which I know building materials goes up and down, up and down. See, that doesn't need to be heated or insulated. But it doesn't need to be, it does, it needs to be air, not air tight, but it needs to, we'll be still enough, we'll keep the loads and stuff out before twelve by twelve, you put a tree in there. And I can tell you that, but that's my idea, because this ain't intended to go. If, if we have fifteen by sixteen, you're basically saving that money. That would be a win-win, especially if you put a loft up there and maybe you can go up ten foot, there are eight foot lofts. Or if these two people go up and just go out.
You're over there.
So I think it's, it'd be, it'd be advantageous to really that, really, well, to get a back for that.
Okay.
And take, think about two by increasing the space on the store. It doesn't take much room to put a few chairs in, and y'all say, you have to do one out of rent, we know that dirt. Well, I think there'd be great to do that. Now that, that's my ideas to get with y'all that, if you want to pursue that with that man.
I'll listen to whatever you have to say. Yeah. No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go do that and, uh, we can table this, uh, for, I'll just get with you next month and just see when we're ready to, to proceed with the discussion, but, uh, I'm happy to do that.
You could, you could move to table or move ahead and post comment or maybe.
Yeah.
Or just, or just reconsider, uh.
Post file for further consideration.
Okay. You're allowed to motion.
Yeah, I, um, based on, um, Council and Clyde, uh, Pleasant's, um, discussion, I propose that we, uh, postpone and reconsider.
Second, all is in favor. Motion carries towards you. It becomes. Full session pursuant to the open meeting, that chapter five five, number one, section five five, point oh seven one, consultation lieutenant attorney, simply realized regarding the nice landing for temporary concrete batch plant, what may be approximately nine hundred feet north of due to road east and thirty nine, four thousand one hundred thirty feet west, definitely, seven, the town of Bartville, and any and all of the issues related there with the time being seven oh five, we convene in the same place.